We are in session here this morning. I'd like to call the meeting to order any items from the public. Since there aren't any, motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, make a motion to approve the agenda for Thursday, April 13, 2023.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Purchase order log. Any questions there for tracing? No internal budget revisions?
There are none.
That's even better. Change in status. New hire recommendation received from the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon for Dakota Little as the deputy with an annual salary for $52,466 effective May 1, 2023. Change in status received from Jennifer Swisher, 911 Director for the Rodina, is that right? Okay, Rodina Miller and Heather Grandstaff. They are going from call takers to telecommunicators. One with a salary increase from $46,357 to $50,341 effective April the 11th. And is that all we have there for change in status? And we need to approve the minutes. Counselperson Barnhart was not here on March 30th, so I'll take a motion to go ahead. No, we don't have to. We can do that in consent agenda. Now let me get here with the council calendars. Okay, we are here today on the 13th. And it says May. Go back here to April. We have fire board tonight at 6:30 PM. Monday, the 17th, they have 4:00 PM health board, 5:30 PM Main Street Martinsburg, 6:00 PM planning commission. On Tuesday, the 18th, WRNR, Tim Zia with Berkeley County, Director of Berkeley County Community Corrections, 11:30 AM Parks and Rec. And it looks like the 5:00 PM sewer board or sewer district was canceled and 6:00 PM storm water canceled. On the 19th, Wednesday, at 4:00 PM Criminal Justice Board at 6:00 PM and Solid Waste Authority. Any other changes or corrections or additions or subtractions?
Mr. President, if I may, just a reminder, next Tuesday, we do have a special meeting scheduled for late 11 at 9:00 AM. I know Counselperson Boyd will not be here. That meeting should only take 10 or 15 minutes. Also, on Thursday, the 27th, the council has two public hearings scheduled for proposed 2023 storm water ordinance. Also, as expected, this past Tuesday, April the 11th, we received notification from the Berkeley County Public Service Water District regarding their petition for water rate increases. This has been discussed with you. The Public Service District Board did pass the resolution on Monday, April the 10th. Now it puts the council in the position where within the next 45 days, or you have 45 days to act, that 45-day period ends on Thursday, May 25, 2023. Just wondering if in light of the storm water ordinance public hearing, whether you wish to schedule a public hearing for the proposed water increases. We did, the last public hearing that we held on for water increases was Thursday, June 1, 2017. At that time, the council decided only to have one public hearing during the course of their normal business day. If you decide to have the hearing, I would recommend that you have it on Thursday, May 11, 2023. That would give you two weeks to discuss and decide whether you wanted to do anything with the proposed increases. West Virginia Code 16-1389 again states that you have 45 days to make a decision. Within that 45-day period, the county commission shall take action to approve, modify, or reject proposed fees, rates, and charges. If after 45 days the county commission has not taken final action to approve, modify, or reject proposed rates, fees, and charges as presented, it shall be effective with no further action taken by the forward county commission. So, what's your pleasure?
In lieu of a few phone calls that I have received about it, I would feel certain that we should probably have a public hearing.
I know there are some commercial businesses that...
Are concerned with, yeah, about the amount of their increase for their, for what they use and how they use it.
Right.
So I think we're probably going to have to do a few changes on that or some, or get some kind of an agreement between those users and the water department, so.
So, public hearings on May the 11th?
May the 11th.
Like, morning and evening?
Morning and evening.
Yes.
And we can schedule that. I had the notice. We have to do a Class 1 lead line. I had the notice all ready to go.
Okay.
All I had to do was verify the date and then I'll put together the...
The order.
The schedule and then I'll get it out. It's the Class 1 lead line is going to run about $4,000. So I'm going to reach out to the water department and let them know that I intend to bill them for that advertisement.
If we have that hearing on May 11th, is it during our regular meeting?
Well, we have one in the morning during your regular meeting and then one in the evening.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Okay, we'll do that.
Okay, that would be perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, bond releases, next thing here. Spring Mills, PUD, Phase 2, Section 1, Plats 3, lots 119 through 136, BCP file number 016-14 tied to Lama File Case number 2102-074 and number 2301-001. Bond number 100390856. Engineering departments make that recommendation. We'll go through all these and then we'll see if there's any questions, Doug, if that's okay. Bond release, Stonecrest, PUD, Phase 4, lots 199 to through 236, and commercial lot, final plat, BCP file number 022-15 tied to number 2208-235 and number 2208-231. Bond number 100463454. An engineering department has made that recommendation. Bond reduction for Stonecrest, PUD, Phase 3, lots 173 through 190, final plat, BCP file number 022-15 tied to bond number 2208-242 and 2208-244. Bond number 100478162. And that's it.
Yeah, Mr. President, I have a question for Doug on this first one.
Uh huh.
Doug, why is the amount currently held is $37,000 and the new bond amount is the same?
Excuse me, sir?
What I'm seeing here is it says the amount currently held is $37,012 and the new bond amount is the same. So that didn't...
Because I couldn't reduce any more blood. The bond is at its suitable amount. He's starting the warranty process, so in 180 days, we hold what's there, start the warranty, and then at the end of 180 days, he gets the full bond back.
Okay, so the other ones that you...
The other ones are full releases. They've played through the warranty period and they're ready to be given back, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. And then there's an application to operate a mobile food vehicle on county property?
That application is in compliance with your policies. As the council's aware, once a year, the Sheriff's Department and other public safety agencies have a, almost like a public safety Saturday where they invite, you know, the public in. This particular mobile food vendor wishes to provide shade, the ice at that event.
Okay. And number 11, we have a bond release, another one, Stonecrest, PUD, Phase 3, lots 126-133 through 137, lots number 161 through 172, lots 191 through 198, and open space, final plat, BCP file number 022-15 tied to, or, BCP, BCP file 2208-242 and 2208-244 with a bond number of 100474455. And the engineering department has made that recommendation. Any questions on that one? If not, then we'll move on to bond release. Stonecrest, PUD, Phase 3, lots 138 through 160, final plat, BCP file number 022-15 tied to, BCP file 2208-242 and 2208-244 with bond number 100441776. Engineering department with that one. Bond release, Stonecrest, PUD, Phase 4, lots 237 through 260, final plat, BCP file number dash 02, I'm sorry, BCP file number 022-15 tied to number 2208-235 and 2208-231. Bond number is 100531504. An engineering department made that recommendation. Any questions for Doug on those? If not, the next item is stop payment check request on the clerk's office. And that is...
It's in the amount of $1,029. The vendor claims that they never received it, so we want to stop paying on the checks until we pre-issue it.
Okay. I'm going through the... Yep, there it is. Okay, $1,029. All right, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
A motion. Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. Correction of assessment logs and apportionment. We have seven personal property tax exonerations for reason of office error. Mr. Hess, good morning.
Good morning. I don't have a whole lot this week, but I do have seven personal property exonerations we had to correct and we get your approval on those. For the reasons that's listed there, the reason we had the exonerations and they total up to $818.74 for those seven. and they total up to $818.74 for those seven personal property.
All right, do I have a motion for the seven personal property tax exonerations due to office error?
Yes, sir, a motion to approve the seven personal property tax exonerations in the amount of $818.74 as presented by the assessor.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
One second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, like sign opposed. One real estate tax exoneration for office error, total value?
Yes, I do.
$1692.06.
Just have the one for Jean Burkhardt. We, her farm application didn't get approved or didn't get keyed, so didn't get the value taken off there in the amount of $1692.06 we had to correct there.
Do I have a motion to approve the one real estate tax exoneration due to office error?
Make a motion to-
You got it?
Yeah.
For the reason for office error?
For reason of office error, we're $1692.06.
That'd be good, do I have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, like sign opposed, motion carries.
That's all I have.
That's it, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And Board and Meeting Reports, HD.
So I had a board meeting with the Roundhouse Foundation on Tuesday and a board meeting with the Roundhouse Authority on Wednesday. Good bit has transpired there over the last few days. As I'm sure you're aware, we discussed previously, I talked to you about we're a little short on heating and air there after some time and then it went by in the morning. So in part with Delegate Height and the other House delegates and also our Eastern Bay handle senators, they've come up with $53,000 to bring that almost to full amount, but our bid was past forty days, so we're just a little bit short now. But we pretty much have everything to go forward with the heating and air. So that came to fruition and-
What's the, what's the short amount?
The short amount is a total of, it's, I believe it's $6,900.
While he's looking, is that something for discussion? I mean, it's pretty close, is there?
$6,914 is where we're short. There was, that was the difference between-
The forty days.
Being over the forty days on the bid, but they still remain the low bidder. I didn't know if there was some way that the county could chip in. The city had put up the $125,000 originally out of their ARPA funds and then, like I said, the Senate and the House put up $53,000.
So we're still short sixty some.
Yeah, $6,914.
I'm going to look at Alan and see if it's-
Take that out of your quality of life account if you want.
Quality of life or I think in Coke Severance now or should?
Actually, yes, we could take that out of Coke Severance.
Coke Severance, okay. Either one?
Well, I probably in hindsight be better off out of Coke Severance. Because you're going to have some money in comfort fund balance in excess of what we projected. And it's just a one-time payment.
Distribution. Do you need a letter from them requesting?
I would, yes, if you could send us a request for the amount, I'll put it on the council's agenda and then the council can approve it.
I have the president's number of requests. And we also met with the city about the Roundhouse yesterday with the easement and the entrance to the Roundhouse. It was a difference of sixty-seven thousand dollars there on the entrance to do a roundabout or a turnaround big enough for 18-wheeler trucks and also to turn the one-way around coming in there. And we also proposed to change the name to, I believe, Roundhouse Way because it was also North Queen Street, which made for two North Queen Streets right there. So we turn around and make a one-way in going towards Liberty versus a one-way out for easier access into the Roundhouse. And when you get to that corner now, since it will become a dead end coming from Liberty, you couldn't come out that way any longer. They're going to put in a full turnaround. We are exchanging 75 feet of land there at the entrance and excluding the fence because it was either a decorative fence or the turnaround. And we thought for now, the infrastructure in the entrance was more important than a fence out there. We have a fence further in that keeps people out. And furthermore, the fence that was up there near Liberty didn't deter any foot traffic or anything else. People walk across the tracks from the other side all the time. So that'll make it so if somebody comes down that way, even a tractor trailer, they can turn around. It's a really nice, Alpha drew it up. It's a big, nice turnaround there and it almost makes for a double entrance exit there at the Roundhouse, so.
If they have a copy of that?
Yeah, I can get it over, yeah. I met with the city manager and Andy and Shane yesterday about that. And they're also working with us on some other things to try to bring the county, the city, and maybe the CBB together to finish up this project over there. So it was a pretty good meeting. And then I guess we also, well, this last weekend I was in Charleston. I got about a 20-minute meeting with the governor, that went well. Talked to him about some of our concerns and problems we're having up here. And he invited me back for lunch sometime, so I thought that was pretty productive as well.
Very good.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Coquelin?
Yes, sir. LAPC meeting this week, they are planning for their tabletop exercise in Ranson on May the 10th. And that's really about, all they've got going on right now is that particular exercise. And then 911 Advisory Board Meeting on Tuesday. The staffing is still solid. They've lost two, but I think they were kind of up-staffed a couple. So, which is probably a good move, the way, you know, people come and go from there from time to time.
We overreproved it.
So the staffing is fine, they're still working a 12-hour shifts and it seems to really help the staff there, that staffing model, so that they're happy with that. I was able to participate, I was asked to participate in a housing summit with United Way this past week and served on a panel to discuss affordable housing in this area, which everybody knows is pretty difficult, especially for, you know, young folks starting out or even elderly folks trying to slow down some. But they just really brought about the need and the concern of not having affordable housing for, you know, perhaps low-wage earners or, like I say, the new kids starting out who aren't, haven't climbed that ladder yet. So there's a lot of challenges there and also with homeless and near homeless. Also had a Development Authority meeting and they're doing some due diligence on a property right now. Their finances are strong and the two buildings that they own on Foxcroft are currently 100% occupied, so that's, it's working out very well for the Development Authority.
I myself, I was unable to attend the Airport Authority meeting on Monday, so I apologize for that. But I've been in touch with Nick. Did we just have a little project I've been helping them with out there on some ground stabilization? So I've got a little bit more to do for them, but I'll get some more information later. Do we want to hold off on the reappointment packet since Jim's not here for the Health Department?
If you remember last week, Mr. Barnhart had indicated that he was looking at some, some other potential-
Yes.
Candidates for that, so.
We're going to postpone that one again, okay. We'll do that. And today, we don't have an honorary councilperson. And the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon, you're right on time. If you would like to come on up and Declaration of Surplus Property for Animal Control.
Yes, sir.
Is that, that's what we have you here for. Look at that, my golly, how did I make that happen?
You did, and I'll take advantage of it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Any mention of the Red Dot Scoops and the advisory deal?
I think I did see that.
I'll just brush on that really quick at the end of the surplus for animal control.
Yes, that was, that was in the written requests on your memorandum to us.
Does that, does it read ahead on this thing?
It is correspondence, A to E, so.
All right, so obviously when I took office, one of my tasks is to try to be as efficient with our equipment and identify what's needed, what's not needed, what's in excess. And in the process of doing that, we started looking into the Marlin 22-caliber rifles that was issued to the Animal Control. And as we've done our research, I can say confidently within the past five years, discussing things with Chief Jones is that they literally have only used one rifle one time in the past five years. So the need I do not see is there to maintain possession of these rifles. When you have equipment such as this, you have to maintain it, keep it clean. I mean, the folks get disciplined if they don't. And it's just an unnecessary piece of equipment. And we have eight of them. And we've gotten one bid for 1,300, another bid for 1,000, and another bid for $525. You all have that copy of those?
Yes, sir.
Obviously, the highest bid was 1,300. And due to the fact that our Animal Control, I do not see any need for these rifles to remain in our inventory. I would ask that the council deem them surplus for the highest bid that's been presented. It's in your paper. And I do have a copy packet for those bids as well as the serial numbers and everything for those weapons.
Is this a little different than how we normally do?
No, Penny did this, you'll see, Penny did a declaration of surplus property for you, which lists the manufacturer of the model number and the serial number. So if this council so approves as part of the motion, if you wish, you need to indicate that the $1,300 is to be provided to the sheriff towards the purchase of the Red Dot, is that correct, sheriff at your request?
Yes, sir. Oh, yes, yeah, I apologize, Mr. Davis. The UMP suppressors that we had deemed as surplus earlier, those funds are going towards the Red Dot.
They've already declared surplus.
Yes, sir.
That's not part of this request.
Correct, sir.
So we just need a motion to allow the Marlins and the Savages to be in the surplus for-
To declare them surplus property and allow the sheriff to-
Make the transaction.
And if you recall, we had the conversation previous, not long ago, with the, with the sale of some surplus weapons that the sheriff had. We just can't put those out for a bid, they have to be licensed ATF dealer. So this is in line with what we've done in the past, what the council has done.
All righty. Can I have a motion to declare surplus property from Animal Control?
Yes, sir, motion to approve the sheriff's request in awarding Green Monster Firearms LLC as the winning bid for $1,300 for the surplus equipment presented by the sheriff.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, like sign opposed, motion carries. And next?
With the Red Dot pistols, the concept, the principle, the goal behind the purchase and testing of these Red Dots is to take the funds accredited to us from the sale of the suppressors, which was approximately $4,800, and apply that to the total price of five pistols being equipped with a Red Dot system. The Red Dot system, I feel, is a very efficient and adequate site to pick up in emergency situations when you have someone whose heart rate is up to above 147 beats per minute, has to make a last-minute decision and literally gets minimum firearms training other than the qualls and what they generally put themselves through annually. We found through various studies that I can provide here in the future or over email to you that when an individual, a novice shooter at that, acquires a Red Dot system, that they are, their accuracy increases significantly in terms of effective rounds on target. Our idea is to equip five pistols with this on the front end, take task force funds and equip five more pistols totaling to 10, which would require an alteration of the pistol as far as its top slide and also a new holster, so you can holster the weapon. It's a big lift, so I wanted 10 pistols purchased. We're going to test them for you, we're going to give you the data from those tests. We're going to take five really low-score shooters and five of our SWAT team members, and we're going to do a test. So we have real-time data here from your own law enforcement to show you the increase in accuracy that it gives you. The ultimate goal is to equip the entire department with these Red Dot systems. There are other agencies across the nation that has already done so and I've heard nothing but good things about it. So since the council approved the sale of the H&amp;K UMPs to MSC, we currently have $4,800 credit with the company. We discussed the purchase of five equipped pistols for the cost of $5,809.50, which I've authorized with the credit that we have, have it will be cost an additional $1,009.50 to purchase 10 totally equipped pistols for a total cost of $6,819.
Okay, I'm back here, Alan.
You're asking the council for any funding?
I'm just asking the council for the support of moving forward with this program.
Yeah, I believe Mr. Lang came in and requested that of his officers as well and gave us a demonstration to talk about some of that.
As long as there's no funding request-
That's what I was going to say.
... review of the sheriff to do that.
Yeah, if it's just a more or less a consensus, there was no action needed.
So, you know, the consensus of the council for the sheriff to move ahead.
Yep, I'm okay with that, everybody else is?
Yeah, and the 1,300 from the surplus equipment should go towards whatever else he needs with that.
All right, I appreciate it, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Yes, indeed. Is that it? Okay. Thank you very much.
Well, if I could steal another minute?
Yep.
I'd be remiss if I did not mention my deep appreciation for the 911 Center as they're sitting behind me, I see. We dropped off an appreciation gift to them this morning and I can't emphasize enough how they're the calm in the storm for us. They are our partner over radio and I've lost count on how many times and I've smiled each and every time that I've heard a dispatcher check on the secure status of our deputies while they're on a call. And I admire the job that they do, the sacrifice that they make. And I want to publicly announce that we really- And I want to publicly announce that we really extremely appreciate the partnership and the relationship with the 911 Center. Let me thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you, as well as we.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you. We're moving right along here. Ms. Swisher, this, the podium is yours, and for this is a Emergency Management Director for Proclamation National Telecommunicators Week. Do you have the proclamation there too, or? Here, you can have that. Oh, that one, okay.
Are you gonna be able to read it?
I don't have my glasses either. Somebody else have their glasses. Let's let Paula read it. We're just listeners today.
Getting her lost her voice her winter in the week. You know, her husband lost his voice because he was celebrating, so.
So, good morning, good morning.
Okay, Paula, it's all yours.
Okay, proclamation, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April the ninth through April the fifteenth of 2023. Thousands of dedicated telecommunications daily serve the citizens of the United States and Canada by answering their telephone calls for police, fire, and emergency medical services by dispatching the appropriate assistance as quickly as possible. And the critical functions performed by professional telecommunications also include those related to forestry and conservation operations, highway safety and maintenance activities, and many other operations performed by federal, state, and local government agencies. And professional telecommunications work to improve the emergency response capabilities of these communication systems through their leadership and participation in training programs and other activities. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Berkeley County Council does hereby proclaim the week of April the ninth through April the fifteenth, 2023, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Berkeley County, West Virginia, an honor and recognition of our county's telecommunications and the vital contributions they make to the safety and well-being of our citizens.
All righty.
Thank you.
And refresh our memory a little bit about your all's award here, about five, five months ago, six, four?
So, November the eighteenth, to be exact. We were recognized as the twenty-second center in the world to become accredited. We were tri-credited. So with all of the hard work of my entire staff, my ministry staff, the dispatchers, supervisors, the security assurance team, we are excited that next week, a few of us will be able to go out to Denver and to accept it in front of some of our dispatch peers from throughout the world to be recognized on the international level. So we are, we're excited about that.
Denver's a nice place to visit.
I've never been there, so.
Enjoy. Any comments or questions from the...
Appreciate all you guys do.
Danny?
Yeah, I've got a history with you guys, goes back several decades. And it's critically important that you're as good as you are and you do what you do. You know, the community depends on you, the responders depend on you, and thank you for what you do. I know a lot of times, you know, police, fire, EMS, you know, maybe out in the field leading that particular role, but had it not been for you all getting the pertinent information to send to these folks, they would not be able to perform at the level that they do either. So thank you for what you do for our community and our responders.
And I could go on and on about the wonderful service that you do provide for this county. And a few times that I've had to call, it's nice to have a convoy. So with that being said, we're gonna take a quick break here and get some pictures. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, you have the award presentation for the supervisor and...
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Yes, indeed.
I just wanted to say that I had to call 911, but I actually had an opportunity to watch one of their dispatchers in action while I stopped for an accident. And I saw a car hit the car one day. And when I stopped, one of their telecommunicators happened to be coming to work, and she was on the other side of the lane, the angle. And she got out of the car, and I watched her go into action as if she was in the center. And I got to see firsthand how they actually would do it in the center, but she was there and performed it right away. And I was in a bandit, like, I didn't know what to do. I was trying to call 911, and she said, I got it, Kenny. And she's on the phone talking to her, whenever people would tell her what to do, and they're communicating, and the lady was dripping blood from her mouth, and I just stand there looking at her, and people just calmly went to her car, and got towels, and is telling her to hold it, and hold compresses, and she's talking to the person on the other end for her, her loved ones, saying she's fine, this is where she is. She was so calm, and she kept the situation to control, and she advised me what to do, telling me to go to the other vehicle and make sure that person's okay. See, they ate anything, and I was just a total wreck until she relaxed everybody. So I got to see firsthand what they do every day on these phones, and I was just so amazed and thrilled that she was there that day. So thank you guys for everything. So that was...
I probably had to put it in reverse and back, and go another direction.
I was really nervous, because she was just calm and just stood right out. I was prepared for it.
Well, let's get a motion to adopt the proclamation, and then we'll do the awards. Is that okay?
Yes, sir, please.
It's, I'll take a motion for the adoption of the proclamation of Telecommunicators Week.
Yes, sir. A motion, motion to approve the proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April the ninth through April fifteenth, 2023.
Have a motion to have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, I don't think there would be, but now the award presentation.
So I just want to add a little bit more, and then get a little scratching in. I'm gonna start off by first thanking Minister Davis, because this will be his last in the role as county administrator.
Thanks for bringing it up.
So it's kind of full circle for me individually, because I was hired as a emergency telecommunicator many moons ago in another county. And at that time, Mr. Davis was one of my bosses back in the day, and that's a full circle to this coming retirement. So I appreciate the opportunities that I've been afforded here in Berkeley County to continue my career and hopefully expand our 911 Center. And so without, I'm very thankful. Ironically, behind me, I also have my previous director, Zoe, so it is a full circle for me as an individual, and I'm thankful that she works for us practically as well. So it's, I'm just blessed. So thanks for the opportunity. But I wanted really to recognize the telecommunicators here today. They play an integral part in assuring that the public receives immediate response to citizens' calls for assistance. It takes a very special person to be an emergency telecommunicator. My staff members are amazing multitaskers, answering emergency and non-emergency telephone calls, dispatching law enforcement, fire, EMS. They must speak to our citizens through some of their most traumatic situations that they might face in their lives. Emergency Telecommunicator Week allows us to recognize all of our emergency telecommunicators and reach them, and very thankful on a personal level. We've been very lucky here in Berkeley County. Our community supports us throughout this week. If you see our Facebook page, you'll see all the support that has been given to the center. As the sheriff said today, dropped off some duties for the dispatchers. It's very much appreciated. I will be very well fed. I'm thankful we don't wear uniforms, because I don't know if we would fit in after this week. So, but I'm very thankful for the community support, and I'm thankful for your support. So we're gonna get first to move. Bring it to our awards. So it's hard, like I've mentioned the past couple of years, it's hard for us to make a decision sometimes on who we're gonna select for the dispatcher, telecommunicator, and supervisor of the year. The telecommunicator of the year this year was voted on by the supervisors. Not to say that this was the only person that received votes, because that would not be so, but this person received the most votes, and many people qualify for this award. And I'm also gonna get a lot of one. But this year, we'd like to recognize Chastity Lovelace as our 2022 Telecommunicator of the Year. Chastity has worked with the Berkeley County Communications for the past two and a half years. She comes to work with a positive attitude, eager to help her coworkers and anyone who needs assistance. Within the past, she has become a certified, past year, she has become a certified training officer, as well as assisting on the department's public education and dispatch review committees. Chastity has recently been promoted to shift supervisor, and we are sure she will continue to grow and contribute to the department. Please join us, the Berkeley County Emergency Communications Center, in congratulating Chastity for this accomplishment and making Berkeley County a safer place for the citizens who reside and pass through our county every day. Congratulations.
We'll get some official ones here, too.
Congratulations. Talk about full circle, this next individual who's being recognized for the supervisor of the year. I worked with her father previously as well, as he was a supervisor at another location. So this year, I get to recognize his daughter, Allison Litten, is being recognized as his 22th supervisor of the year. Ally has been a supervisor with the center since 2021, and in these past two years, we have seen her excel and grow. Ally is coordinator for our public education program, making sure that those who assist her in the program are teaching their children, as well as the adults why and when to call 911. She's amazing, certified training officer, always receiving compliments from her trainees and others about how good of a job she does. Berkeley County Emergency Communications Center and the citizens have certainly benefited from Ally's dedication to her job. Please join us in congratulating Ally for her accomplishment. So thank you again for your continued support. Thanks to all my staff for your support. Paula is my right hand, she helps me every single day, and I'm very thankful, I appreciate it.
Well, hang around here, we're gonna take a quick break, and we're gonna get some pictures and make it all official and get them on the worldwide web at the gracious hand of Matt, so.
Thank you so much.
We're on? [S01] Okay,[S01] we're back in session. Next on the agenda is Tracy Gilliam's grant administrator,[S01] FY23 Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic Planning.
And this is a guaranteed grant?
Guaranteed grant?
This is the Mount Everest of all grants. [S03] This is the Goliath. [S03] I mean,[S03] in 25 years,[S03] there has not been a grant that has been more difficult. This is our,[S03] this we're reapplying.
So we earned our pennies?
We will.
We will,[S01] okay.
The purpose of this program is to help transform community behavioral health systems and provide comprehensive, coordinated behavioral health care by establishing a new CCEH,[S03] which is Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic, by providing person and family centered integrated services. The intent of the grant is to,[S03] one,[S03] assist organizations in the planning for and development and implementation of a CCVHC that meet the criteria for CCVHC certification. Two,[S03] to provide a comprehensive range of outreach,[S03] screening,[S03] assessment,[S03] treatment,[S03] care coordination, and recovery support based on the need assessment that aligns with the CCVHC certification criteria. And three,[S03] support recovery from mental illness and/or substance use disorder by providing access to highly qualified mental health and SUD services regardless of an individual's ability to pay. This is a four-year grant,[S03] a million dollars a year, and it will pay for the following at 100%. For years one through four,[S03] the personnel and salary and fringe for a clinical supervisor,[S03] a billing specialist, or case managers,[S03] three therapists,[S03] three drug screening techs,[S03] one peer recovery coach,[S03] one driver,[S03] and one admin assistant. It will also pay for five computers,[S03] 12 licenses for clinical software, a communication sensitivity class for half of the staff at the day report center, and one 12-passenger van. In year two,[S03] it will pay for all of the above plus lab fees and communication sensitivity class for the other half of the staff, and another 12-passenger van. [S03] In year three,[S03] it pays for all of the above. And instead of a 12-passenger van,[S03] it's a minivan and conflict resolution class for half of the staff. And the same thing for year four,[S03] another minivan and conflict resolution class for the other half of the staff. We are reapplying for this. [S03] We applied for this last year. We received a summary form on what our weaknesses were. I've gone back through and fixed those and their suggestions. The sensitivity class has been added and the conflict resolution at their suggestion for sensitivity training for the specific targeted audience of substance use disorder and mental health.
And these are not community positions?
These are right.
These are existing positions. [S02] This is the big Samson grant that Tim and Tracy and Elizabeth worked on last year,[S02] very first term they ever put into it. And I,[S02] you know,[S02] I know,[S02] I only know half the effort that they put in, just an incredible amount of time and incredible amount of documentation. It is a federal,[S02] it is a competitive federal grant,[S02] so it was,[S02] this has been a big lift.
That's what,[S03] the scoring,[S03] I mean,[S03] for $4 million,[S03] they shouldn't just give it to anybody. I mean,[S03] it was very,[S03] it was very targeted,[S03] very strict scoring guidelines. And it was,[S03] it's a hard grant for $4 million.
That's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money,[S03] and it's hard.
I can't,[S01] you know,[S01] for what all it covers the first year and continues the next four years,[S01] or three years,[S01] I guess.
Did you get any of it last year?
No. [S03] The most important thing I felt that we got last year was the scoring sheet and the suggestions on what the strengths were,[S03] because we had a significant amount of strengths, but what the weaknesses were. [S03] So to be able to go back and fix the weaknesses and resubmit is huge.
How many did they give out here?
I want to say there was like 20. So it's extremely,[S03] through the whole United States,[S03] yes. [S03] So it's extremely competitive.
West Virginia got this?
We did not. [S03] We're reapplying.
This is directly to the best.
I would assume no one in West Virginia got this last year?
Yes. [S03] It was Cabo County,[S03] where Huntington is. One of their behavioral health places got it.
But last year,[S02] when they submitted,[S02] our licensed behavioral health center wasn't completely accredited and up and running yet, so that certainly will work to a very good end. And this would be in addition to the Medicaid billing that we're doing. So this would,[S02] this would absolutely put you over,[S02] over the top with your favorite work.
Well,[S01] it looks like we need a motion to approve.
Yes,[S05] sir. [S05] Motion to approve the implementation grant for fiscal year 2023 of a certified community behavioral health clinic, a planning,[S05] development,[S05] and implementation grant in the amount of $4 million.
Have a motion? [S01] Do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? I will say this,[S01] hard work always pays off good. [S01] I most certainly think that we probably have the best shot of getting it with your abilities. Thank you,[S01] and not. Call for the question. [S01] All those in favor say aye. Like,[S01] sign opposed,[S01] motion carries. [S01] Thank you.
If we are successful in this grant,[S02] this grant will take in an incredible amount of administration. Don't be surprised if she's not in there for a little bit more.
Just a little bit more?
Yeah,[S06] now he's on his way out.
Give her whatever she wants.
Thank you. Okay. [S01] Jennifer,[S01] we got you again. Direct emergency services enhance 911 communication advisory board bylaws.
So when we began meeting again as a 911 emergency community advisory board, we found probably within about a year of the process that we did not have bylaws, which are required for that committee. We searched with county's help and were not able to locate any. So this is an effort of the advisory board,[S07] the chairperson of that committee,[S07] myself and others, to make sure that we do have bylaws for that committee. It was recently approved by the county attorney. [S07] Minor adjustment was made and prepared today for something that is a little bit difficult.
Okay. [S01] Anthony,[S01] have any comments or questions on it?
I don't think it was made. [S08] It needs to be on the books as I want it.
Okay. All righty. [S01] Can I have a motion to approve the advisory board bylaws?
Make a motion to approve the bylaws.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? [S01] All those in favor say aye. Like,[S01] sign opposed,[S01] motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right.
It's hard to believe that this advisory board's been in existence since 1997.
And never bylaws?
Never had bylaws.
Oh my,[S01] well,[S01] thank you.
No one's ever questioned it.
That's because of the good job the board's been doing.
That's right.
All righty. [S01] Well,[S01] let's take a little break until summer gets here. [S01] Is that all right?
Okay, we're back in session, Summer Baird, with access strategies is going to give us a legislative update.
Nice.
Three important ones.
Right. Don't tell the other ones.
Today, today, yeah.
Did I give you two?
No.
Nope, just one.
Thank you. Okay. I think this is like first time I've talked to you guys without previous.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is the first time.
Well, you've always, Eddie, for a while. But is your first time? Welcome to County Council.
Commission, hey, we're commissioned now.
Well, no, you're not.
I'm sorry.
There's a whole lot of confusion about that.
It was wish, I think.
You don't instantly become a commission, you have to like go through the process. We'll talk about that, though.
Okay. It's all yours. Thank you.
So, I think it was a really successful session for Berkeley County. I kind of always put, you know, a high-level summary of other hot-button issues that were discussed, and I always like to point out how many bills were introduced, how many actually completed the process, and then how many have become law, because I think it really sheds light on how hard it is to get a bill passed. So this past session, there was over 2,300 bills introduced, and then ultimately 333 made it through the legislative process and were sent to the governor. And of those bills, he just vetoed one bill, the rest became law, whether he signed them or they just, you know, became law after that period of time. I won't go into discussing like the other hot-button issues, but if you care enough to read about it and ask questions, you're welcome to. I will just jump into the county priorities. So, I guess about midway through session, we realized that there was a supplemental appropriation moving through the process that had within it some COVID relief money that was going to be dispersed to the Water Development Authority, while Eddie and Steve were down in Charleston. Senator Blair made us aware of that. So we immediately started working on that, and to be honest, typically supplemental appropriations are pretty painless, but I think, especially in the House right now, there's not really a big appetite for just handing money to the governor without knowing specifically what it's being used for. So this was actually more labor-intensive than supplementals typically are. There was a lot of discussion on the House floor and debate about other projects that people wanted to send COVID money to. So we worked on that and successfully got that across the finish line, and then I'm sure, as all of you are aware, then over the last couple of weeks, we were able to work with Senator Blair and the governor's office, and then the Water Development Authority to get the grant funding for the water expansion project. And so that fiscal impact is $25 million to the county. That's a good summary, I don't know, I think everyone's pretty aware of that, so probably not any questions, but.
If you, if you hold on just for a second, some of those, I'll say some, those funds had kind of fallen between the cracks, and through Summer's efforts, she, she kind of went back down through the cracks and helped with.
Revitalizing.
With other folks from the, from the governor's office to the IJDC, helped pull that $25 million back up on the table. So, I know you only spent probably 30 seconds talking about that, but that was a big deal.
Yeah.
Because there was an opportunity for that money to have gotten lost.
Yeah, and I guess we can talk more in depth, this really was more than just, you know, advocating for the supplemental appropriation, that was what happened during this particular legislative session, but it's really been, what, two years? Almost two years of, I don't want to say harassing, but almost harassing the people that, you know, had said this money is there, it's going to happen.
Remind.
Reminding, gently, softly, politely reminding the folks that, you know, had, had said that that money was going to be there for the county. Hey, where's this money? What's the status? Probably every time I saw Senator Blair, I was asking him about it. And yeah, you're, you're right, like if, if you don't continue politely reminding those people, they, I mean, they have a lot on their minds, it's not, I don't think it's ever intentional, but things just fall through the cracks and things get forgotten.
Yeah, they're onto something else.
Right. And particularly with the governor's office, when they have so many requests, just constantly people coming to them, asking for money like that, it, it will get lost if someone's not keeping tabs on it. So, I think that was probably two years of work, but then, you know, we had to make sure, once we knew that our money was within this supplemental appropriation, then we had to get that across the finish line to be able to get it. So, I'll, if there's nothing else on that, I'll move on to.
Okay.
The regional jail per diem is another good example of something that feels like I've, I think we've been talking about this and working on this issue, or over two years, maybe three years now, but we went into this session with sort of a long-term quote-unquote "solution," but I don't want to look at it as a solution, because I think it could constantly be improved upon and changed, as with anything really in state code, but it's, it's a solution for now, to make sure every year you're not having to fight the battle of potentially an increase to the regional jail per diems. And it also does something that we have talked about many times, incentivizing counties to use other resources, like the day report center or drug court system, those types of things that keep people out of jail that shouldn't be in jail. If there's a way to help them and help the community and keep that jail bill down because of it, then I think the state saw finally that they should be incentivizing the counties that do that. So, you know, we went into session with a formula that really does that, it incentivizes counties to keep their regional jail costs below a pro-rata share that's determined based on population and then being divided by the number of the total inmate days across the state. If you guys have questions about that formula, I know it's been described as convoluted many times, but when you look at it on paper, it's far easier to understand. You guys do a good job of keeping your share of inmate days below like the threshold of 100%, so all of your days are either discounted or at the normal rate, you're not receiving any penalty days, because you keep your number under that threshold.
Doesn't it also include now that municipalities have to pay at least one day?
So, that, they do not have to pay one day, but there is a, there's something in the bill to allow the county to establish a payment system with a municipality, if both a municipality and a city were to enter into memorandum of understanding that they pay that first night. There is discussion within some of the interim committees that deal with regional jails to kind of look into that further, and I would imagine that maybe in the next session, they'll look at making that actually mandatory.
Yeah, because I don't think anybody's going to volunteer for that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so. I don't think so either, and that was not something that the council had asked me to really advocate for, that just happened to be within the text of the bill that the Senate ended up putting this language in.
Well, I saw it, I realized it was something we had to work out as an agreement, I thought it was just in the bill, but I see what you're saying now, so.
Yeah, so I think that's kind of a next step. There is already talk about them looking at that during the interims and then likely addressing it in the next session. And if that's something that the council feels we should advocate for, then I would be willing to do that. So, in summary, the estimated annual impact after this goes into effect is about $554,000. That's obviously an estimate, because you could potentially reduce your days even further, and then you're going to have even bigger savings, but it's just kind of based on what you have been paying to give that estimate.
If you, if my memory serves me correctly, when we were looking at this before it got voted on, it was, it was, had the bill not been approved, it was going to cost us about another $500,000.
Correct. And that's where that estimated annual impact comes from.
Yeah, but I had thought that it was going to save us like $200,000, but that, but it's actually more than.
Well, yeah, it's more than 200, because you're looking at, if things would have stayed the same, but they weren't going to stay the same. So like that 200 number is if you were going to stay at 4825 per day, but without this bill, you would have gone to 5448 per day. So, I mean, you could do the math either way, I guess, but.
Well, I couldn't, because if you remember, I called you, I said, I've got both shoes off and a calculator, and I can't.
No, 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 I just mean comparing it to what you had been paying, is, like if you want to look at it that way, yeah, was a, it's a difference of about 200,000, but when you look at without the bill, there was no bill moving through the process that would have froze the regional jail per diem again.
Right.
So without the bill, you would have jumped to 5448, yeah, which is where that $554,000 came from.
Thank you. Summer, it's been, we were on the list, so there's been all kinds of.
Chatter.
Chatter about what happens to the counties, or to this bill, who hasn't paid, who haven't paid a regional jail bill for some time.
So there's actually.
As soon as there's two or three or four million dollars.
Yeah, I think now there's only a couple left, like maybe two, everyone else has entered into payment plans, and I, if I'm correct, there's only two or three, but they've removed, prior to passage of the bill, they've removed any language that, there was language that referenced case law. It already is possible, if the state really wanted to personally hold commissioners accountable for paying any bills that they're responsible for, they could, including the jail bill. This bill, after the text of the bill included that language, and there was like some heartburn over that, so they removed that text from the bill, but it really could still happen regardless. But I think it's just two counties, and they are working out payment plans, because it, I think the bill did include something about getting, establishing a payment plan. And with the formula, I think five or four total weren't receiving a credit, because they're over their allotment or right around their allotment, and then one is getting penalized. So one county needs to work on getting their numbers down, right? And there's like some talk.
There just seems to be some confusion out there amongst the counties about how the formula works, and so I know that there's, there's got to, there'll be a lot to have to.
Maybe they should, maybe they should hire somebody to explain it for them.
Maybe.
And I'm sure the County Commissioners Association or the Association of Counties can help them too. Okay, we'll just move on.
Yeah.
All right. Um, somehow I got back to the previous page. All right, the next bill is something, again, that had kind of been worked on for several years, some progress was made, and then this year, you all put it as one of your top priorities, and we were thankfully able to get it across the finish line, that accelerating the conversion of excess tax on property transfers. This was Delegate Hardy's bill a few years ago to kind of set that in place, and then we came back and basically sped it up to get the money back to Berkeley County in a more rapid, at a more rapid pace. And I wrote in here just kind of like the background on what happened, going into this session and even last session, we knew that the biggest hurdle was really to get it through Senate finance, because that's kind of always where it had died in years past. So, we kind of played a little game with it and found a bill that Senator Tar was the lead sponsor of, that dealt with the same code section, the same money. His bill initially was just the portion of this bill that deals with election infrastructure and security, and so then we worked with Senator Tar and got him to agree to add the language of this bill into his bill. And, you know, that doesn't give John Hardy the credit for all the work he put into it, but it ultimately got the bill across the finish line, whereas I don't know if the House bill coming over would have had the same success. So, the actual yearly math until fully implemented is likely going to be something that you guys, if you care to know exactly what the bill is. that you guys, if you care to know exactly what the bill is bringing back until then, you'll have to look at what your property transfers are, because that, you know, those numbers aren't readily available to me. I did try to get them through the finance committees, but they didn't seem to have it. So, I know once fully implemented, it means approximately 3 million. Of course, as you have more of those transfers, the number's going to go up, but based on just current numbers, it's going to be approximately 3 million once fully implemented, and I believe fully, full implementation is 2026, if I'm remembering correctly. So, you're, you're, it'll go up incrementally 45%, 45%, and then I think in 2026 of the year, you'll get the full amount.
Everything that's contained in the bill regarding election, administration, infrastructure, and security, we already do. So, when we first heard of the change, Gary and I got together and it really doesn't, it didn't affect us because we were doing it anyway, so.
Yeah, and the Secretary of State will, like, will work through the legislative rulemaking process to establish their rules, and then any county that's not meeting their threshold, that 10% will go to get them to that threshold, and then once they meet the threshold, if you already meet it, then that's great, you get the money right away. Um, but if a county, there's many counties that don't meet that, you know, that threshold, so they'll have to bring their election infrastructure up to speed before they get the full amount. And then, I'm sure there will kind of be, like, year after year, this is the threshold, the standard, and if you meet it, great, if you don't, then you use that money to do it. Makes sense. All right, here's the bill Jim's excited about. Um, so, the bill to allow the county council to change their name to commission, um, passed, and there, once it goes into effect, then you have, you can introduce a resolution, you have to publish it, like, you know, in newspapers with a legal advertisement, regulations, um, and then you can vote on that resolution as a commission, or council, sorry, the change to commission. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Pretty, pretty simple, but again, there was, like, you know, some unnecessary drama with a bill that you think is just simple.
Had no effect on anybody else.
Right. And one of the count, the, one of the council of House Gov. Ward thought that it required a constitutional amendment, and so, you know, there's always fun games at the legislature that you have to.
Didn't take a constitutional amendment to make us a council, did it?
Right.
Okay.
And I don't think, I think there might have been, like, one no vote in committee, and then on the floor, I don't think there was any no votes, I can't recall, but regardless, it passed, so. Um, this county courthouse license plate bill was a, a little strange because it doesn't necessarily deal with the license plate thing, but it allows you all to now go directly to the DMV to apply for a special registration plate if you were to want to do a special plate, rather than going through the legislative process, which, there are so many requests that go through the legislative process, and it's long and you have to wait for session. Um, so now, if you ever want to request a special registration plate, you can apply directly through the DMV and they can approve it, or not, if they choose not to. Um, and then, another thing that we've worked on for a few years now is the magistrate allocation. There was several bills that, at the very end, they combined into this one bill, so magistrate allocation was kind of the county priority, but within the same bill, it does several other things that I think will ultimately have a financial and just an overall impact on Berkeley County. Um, so, as of 2024, there will be another magistrate added to the county, and then, um, these circuit courts are being, broke up right now, it's Jefferson, Berkeley, Morgan, and Jefferson's being pulled off into their own, so that will lighten the caseload, and it goes to five judges within that circuit. And then, as of 2024, Berkeley and Jefferson and the family court system will have five family court judges. So, ultimately adding more judges within all the various layers of the judicial system in the county to, um, ensure that our citizens have access to justice and hopefully have a fiscal impact on the county also. So, I'll just briefly run through the bills that started through the legislative process but didn't make it across the finish line, and there's various reasons. Um, some of these, I feel like we've worked on year and year, year after year after year, and there's just not necessarily an appetite for it. Um, the Rails With Trails bill, I felt for sure, uh, was going to, you know, last year it made it through almost the entire process and then died on the last day of session. This year, um, another special interest group came in and, and changed the text of the bill, which, to be honest, made the bill stronger and more accurate. Um, so it would have been far better legislation. However, they referenced a section of code that deals with imminent domain, and that was really a hot-button issue. Uh, so a bill that likely shouldn't have really been an issue became an issue because of that line about imminent domain. So, I would say that if the county still sees this as a priority, we go back next year with a similar bill text, but make sure we don't reference imminent domain. Um, it, it was not changing anything about that law, it was simply referencing a different code section. Um, that really didn't need to be in the bill, and, and it's just an entirely different topic than what was the issue at hand. So, um, if the county still sees that as a priority in the future, that would be my recommendation. Um, the legal advertisements, I, I hate to say I don't think there's an appetite for it, um, but I just don't necessarily think there's an appetite for it. We've tried various approaches and there seems to be little to no traction every year on the topic. Um, we can certainly get more creative and try to find a different way, but I think for the amount of money that you are spending versus what you're getting back from the advertisements, I'm not necessarily sure if it's a good use of resources, but that's just, um, my, my opinion on it. Certainly, if it remains a county priority, we will keep trying to be creative with ways to do it, but, um, that's just kind of the feedback after, I think this was the third session, trying to get some traction on it, and most people are just not really, um, interested in it. Or, I don't want to say most, I just think there's not a, a large enough majority to, to get it, get it moving. Um, the 911 operators retirement bill is actually a bill that almost made it through the legislative process, and then, I think, was it Thursday of the last week, they realized that there was sort of a fatal flaw within it. Um, so they, I think, I talked with you about this, maybe, um, they pulled it and have told me and told others that it would be a priority in the next specials, like, when they call a special session. Um, but if they had passed it as-is, it could have affected what we did last year with the firefighters. Um, so, I think ultimately it's going to happen for, you know, to give the option to the 911 workers, but it just, will, will likely, hopefully happen in a special session. Um, and the highway dollars, we talked a lot about this, Eddie, when you were, you and Steve were in Charleston. Um, I think we made a lot of good progress on this topic, and it really wasn't something that, it actually wasn't something that was a county priority initially, but once I saw the bills had been introduced, I thought they would be helpful to the county if we could get them through the process. The, the bills, if you're not familiar, if you don't remember, would, um, establish a formula by which highways distributes money, and it would be more, um, based on highway traffic and population, an increase in population, and there were various things that were used within the formula. Um, toward the end of session, when it wasn't really moving through the process, we got Senator Oliverio to request that it be put into a study resolution, so, um, during interms, the Transportation Committee will, will be digging into it further, and hopefully will get something, um, moving in the next session.
Yeah, and he was very understanding and supportive.
Yeah.
Of this bill.
Yeah, Senator Oliverio is from Morgantown, so they have a lot of road issues, um, and would also benefit from a, a formula that kind of changes the way they distribute it. Um, and then, this also was not originally a county priority, but I guess probably three quarters of the way through, um, we decided to add it to the list of priorities because it would have a big impact on Berkeley County. Um, so the increase to the fire and casualty premium, it used to be there and then it sunset and went away, and the bill would add the 45 cents back onto the premium, and there was a lot of different opinions about how to disburse that money, and, um, ultimately on the last night, it had gone back and forth many times, and there just were too many changes and too many opinions about what should happen. So, I do know, I've been included in several emails and several conversations since the end of session, uh, where they're trying to work out the best way to, um, disburse that additional amount of money. Um, we're obviously advocating that it be done more based on population, rather than how many fire departments you have in your county, um, but at the same time, not taking the money away that currently exists for the fire department. So, just talking specifically about the new increase in funding. If that makes sense.
Yeah, and there's a huge inequity there.
Yeah.
For, uh, our county in particular, you know, where we have five departments that will receive, and it's a, it's a fluctuating amount of money, anywhere typically between 44,000 and 48,000, depending upon how many departments qualify at that particular quarter for those funds, where in, in some places in, in the state, they have anywhere from 17 to 19 departments in that county. So, there's a tremendous amount of money that's going there, that, that came from here, quite honestly, because of the property values and insurance premiums that are being written on higher value, higher valued homes. So, it is, it is a very, uh, large inequity, and we worked, uh, along with Summer, trying to secure that funding for the volunteer fire departments.
And just to point out, this was, this is another example of, um, we kind of laid the groundwork on this to the very first year that we worked with Berkeley County. So, the very first year, uh, was that 2021? I think it's 2021. Oh, my years are running together now, I have a baby. Um, 2021, I went to many, gosh, so many members and showed them this spreadsheet, actually, that Matt and I had worked on, um, showing the difference between how per person in each county, what each county was receiving, and, I mean, you would, when, when I'd take this to members, they were visibly shocked by the discrepancy between how much Berkeley County, or even Canal County, or, um, Montagnalia County, like, the big counties that don't have as many fire departments are really seeing an inequity, uh, whereas, you know, a lot of smaller southern counties that have, you know, 15-plus fire departments, we're getting, like, $10 per person, and we're getting maybe, like, it was a 55 cents?
52 cents.
I don't, I don't know, it was.
52.
Yeah, 52 cents per person as opposed to 10, some, $10 and something per person in those, some of those southern counties, so, um, you know, laying that groundwork a couple of years ago, people haven't start, haven't stopped talking about it. Um, so, I, I was happy to see that there was still effort being made on it, all because, all because of a, a spreadsheet that, that we put together. Yeah. Um, so, yes, I, I'm hopeful that maybe it would get included in a special session call. Um, I know that the House and Senate have been talking back and forth, and that was kind of the conversations recently that I was included in, uh, looking at their different spreadsheet ideas. Um, so, we'll see what happens with that, but it would be great if we could get that on a special session call. Um, and then finally, the allocation of state troopers per county. At the very beginning of session, this was, like, moving rapidly through the process and then came to a screeching halt because they sent, the senate sent it back to committee, waiting on some information from the state police. I'm not sure if you all are up to speed on the things that have happened within the state police over the last couple of months, but there was a lot of drama, kind of all unraveled during session, and the information that they were waiting on from the state police never really came to fruition, so, bill ultimately died, um, but it did see some really quick traction at the beginning, so I think, once they get the, that information, perhaps we can get it moving again. Um, but weren't really anticipating the drama within the state. Um, and then, just a few that did not, weren't taken up at all by the legislature. Um, the property tax rollback, which we've talked about a lot. Um, you know, we might, if, if it's still, I think it is still a priority for everyone, um, you know, trying to get more creative with ways to approach it, um, might be a good idea. And then, the Outdoor Heritage Conservation Fund, I'm, based on discussions that we've had with Delegate Hardy, doesn't seem to be something that's going to change anytime soon. Um, county sales tax, there are always introduced bills, but they never really seem to move anywhere. This legislature just does not really have an appetite for that. Um, it could always be, you know, approached in a different way in the future and maybe see some, some traction on it. And then, those two studies, we tried our hardest to get, um, those studies moving, but there really wasn't an appetite for it. We can, of course, again, try, try in the future, but I feel like there's always a few bills that just, you try and try and try, and no one's got an appetite for right now. Um, but we'll definitely, if they're still priorities in the future, then work on them again. Any questions?
Questions?
I think you did a great job. You had a hard work, appreciate you.
Yeah, I, I really don't have any questions, uh, Summer, but, uh, I appreciate your communications that we've had throughout this session, e- even before, uh, and, and some after, but, uh, also, I want you to know that I appreciate your and Dan's work at the Capitol this year, getting us in front of the people that we needed to talk to real desperately, uh, and just how professionally you handled us and that, so, thank you very much. Good job.
I really enjoy when you guys come down. It's, I think it's very beneficial for everyone, for members to see your face and then for you all, obviously, to get a taste of what goes on there every day.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we, you know, we traveled down there with, with certain, uh, ideas and expectations, and you have been able to get us to the table with the people that we really need to communicate with, that are the chairpersons of those separate, you know, committees, or vice chairs of those committees that can kind of control the, the temperature in that room, so, uh. Yeah. Thank you.
I know for the years that I've been going down, not too much more recent than not, that when you watch a bill to make its way through each chamber, to get through each committee, you're lucky if that bill makes it into law within three to four years. Lucky. So.
Yeah.
It's, uh, it is definitely a process and.
Yeah, that's, I, again, that's kind of why I always, at the beginning of this report, list how many bills are introduced and then how many actually make it through the process, because I, I think that's probably something that people don't really understand, like, oh, it's easy to get a bill across the finish line, and it's not.
Well, you would think it would be, because you're specific to a certain need in each county, but then you've got 54 other counties, you have to convince that when you sign your name to it, that it's going to work there too, and it just doesn't. And I don't know, real good fix, I'm sitting here looking at Matt, he's smiling at me, but.
Well, and, and the other thing, it is the misinformation that, like, like with the jail bill, this was a really big issue because modern technology makes it so people can communicate very rapidly, and if there's some sort of, I don't want to say lie, because I don't think people are doing it potentially, but they just don't understand the formula, for instance, they didn't under, a lot of people didn't understand the formula, and I would just be walking through, I wa, was walking through the House chamber one morning, and I overheard some of our House members from this area talking to some other House members, and I heard jail bill, and I was like, what are they talking about? And they were kind of, not arguing, but they were, like, debating with these other people, and the, the other members just simply didn't understand the formula, and they had been on the listserv and seen, you know.
Comments.
The comments floating around and just took. just took it and ran with it. And so it's very hard to then with 134 members, go make sure everyone actually understands.
Understands the formula.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because I think two days prior to the vote, I had gotten a text from one of our delegates, jail bill is dead.
Yep.
I'm like, I don't think so, you know, but.
Yeah, well, I mean, I got those same text messages. So Monday, the last Monday of session, it was on the House Finance agenda, and then it disappeared from the agenda. Now I refresh and what's going on, why is it removed? So then I start playing the game of why is the bill gone? This, we're almost out of time, you've got only two more Finance Committee meetings. Everyone I would text with from the House, it's dead, it's dead. I was like, guys, what, this is what I've learned over the last five years of working at the legislature now. Nothing is actually dead until midnight the last day of session. When the clock strikes midnight and they adjourn, signee die, then something's dead. But until then, it's not. So we just kept fighting and we kept it alive through the Senate, thankfully, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
I do not.
Alan? Penny? Matt? Okay. Anthony, I'll bring him to you.
Question.
Okay.
I will say, I don't like to speak for other people, but I know Steve isn't here, he's on vacation, but this person told me that he's thankful for your services and what you guys do there and showed him different than what he had a conception of when he came.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I think it's really good for everyone to come spend time down there and just see really what happens. And it really is eye opening to the insanity that goes on inside.
Organized chaos.
Yes.
Almost organized chaos.
I mean, it's a, it's an uphill battle, but, but I have to agree that this legislative body this year were very successful in reducing taxes across the entire state of West Virginia. You know, we've got some bills passed that were important to us, saved us some money. So I look at this, at this year as really a big win for West Virginia this year, this legislative session this year. There was a few days I was very frustrated.
I was getting right to that, Eddie, that, I was thinking, okay, you know, what, what's lagging, what, who, who needs prodded, who, you know?
Yeah, I don't, I don't really like to say this, but I actually shed some tears this session for the first time. And it's just like you, when the, when people were saying the jail bill is dead, it's dead. I've worked on this for the last seven weeks. It was like, you know, it was just frustrating.
Yeah, but I, I think they had a good session.
Yeah.
I would congratulate our Senate and House.
And tomorrow, will you be at the Legislative Roundup?
At EDPB.
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
I've worked.
I do too, so. But there is a, an event taking place tomorrow for the EDPB that's a Legislative Roundup.
We're going to be at the Aquarian tomorrow.
All right. Thank you so much, Summer. You take care of Berkeley today, okay? Or is Berkeley taking care of you?
I don't know, cause I was wondering.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All righty, that concludes the open session here. I just have a, a quick executive session if I have a motion to go into executive session.
Should move.
Oh, legal matters, I'm sorry. Legal matters, just a quick question for Anthony.
And there will be no.
No action taken, and I can go ahead and open up items to the public. And if there aren't any, okay, we're in executive session.